From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue, Bakersfield, California. Kern County's vision is to create and maintain a customer-centered county government designed to garner the confidence, support, and trust of the people we serve. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Board to reconvene. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Maggard.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Good morning and welcome to the Tuesday, June 29th, 9:00 AM meeting of the Kern County Board of Supervisors. We'll begin today's flag salute led by Supervisor Couch. And following the Pledge of Allegiance, please stay standing for a moment of prayer, silence, or meditation, whichever you prefer.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the God of the world. The Constitution of America, the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States, 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 the Constitution
staff to run those programs. So, well, so at public health, you know, during this COVID crisis, we found ourselves scrambling. And, you know, we've done a great job. We could have done better had we had adequate staffing. We don't have enough nurses at public health to do the work that has to be done. The nurses that we do have, most of them are not Spanish-speaking. I know that there's a shortage of nursing, especially in the Central Valley, and I know that this has been addressed through the Board of Registered Nurses, which I am a board member. We are working on that. The problem is that our nurses here, their wages are so low. Even though they're residents, they want to stay in Kern County, they go to other places. They have, they have, they have their bills to pay, their schooling, you know, nursing costs over $100,000, and therefore are forced to move to other counties that pay much higher. During the COVID crisis, we also didn't have adequate general staffing. We had to go outside of our scope of work and hire extra people that are, were not familiar with public health services or our community. We hired traveling nurses. Traveling nurses, again, don't know our community, don't know the, what we deal with in Kern County. And not only that, the traveling nurses were paid much, much more than our public health nurses. I mean, that, that's, that's awful. You know, here we have the nurses that we treasure, we admire for the work that they do, but yet, they're so underpaid.
Ma'am, can I get you to bring your comments to a close? We're a minute and 30 over right now.
Okay.
We're coming up on four minutes.
So, the preliminary budget contains $363.9 million in discretionary revenue that is not designated to specific purposes, which supervisors directly control. That's a source of allocated funds that the board could use to increase employee wages, since other funds will address many other needs. In addition, we still have the ARP to be used to compensate essential workers. The county designated all public-facing employees as essential workers, and you have the discretion to allocate those funds as well. Under Section 9901 of the ARP, which amends Section 602 of the Social Security Act, an employee who continues to operate as an essential business during the COVID-19 emergency may have the opportunity to secure...
Ma'am, you're going to have to wrap this up right now. We're at four and a half minutes almost right now.
Secure premiums paid for their employees in the amount up to $13 per hour suggested to cap at 25 per year. This is a big deal for eligible employees in frontline. I ask you, why wouldn't you want to thank the dedicated, hard-working employees with extra pay for stepping up to provide essential services that our county and communities count on during the pandemic? I respectfully request that the board invest in public health and our county essential departments, probation department, DHS, behavioral health, all essential county employees who put their lives on the life, on the line to keep our community safe and who will lead our community to brighter and stronger future. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it, and I look forward to meeting with the other Board of Supervisors. Thank you. Have a good day. Thank you.
Okay, could we have our next speaker, please? And again, this is for matters not on the agenda right now, and I'm just asking speakers to please try and be mindful of that two-minute time limit. Thank you.
Of course. My name is Nick Cott. I'm a systems analyst for the Auditor Controller through ITS. I don't have anything prepared, so I'll probably be pretty brief. But I did want to say, I think the last time I spoke here, Ms. Perez, you recognized my comments, and also Mr. Alsop, you gave a very thoughtful response. I was speaking towards the issue of stagnant wages. And with all due respect, you know, those are just words. And over the past 13 years, that's all we have, are just words. So, just want to stand up here and ask you guys to give us some action, because, you know, from county employee perspective, things are pretty bleak. And, yeah, we just appreciate some action this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
It's for the budget.
Okay.
Good morning. My name is Emma de la Rosa, Policy Advocate with Leadership Council, Supervisor Scrivner. I've reached out to you about three times already, called your office, and I left the voicemail, and I have not received a single call, return message from you or your office. And residents of Fuller Acres do want to speak to you. They are facing very harsh water quality issues and governance issues. Even throughout the moratorium, their water has been shut off or threatened to have their water shut off. And the board members know that the water, that the water is not supposed to be shut off because of the moratorium. Still, they continue to threaten residents. And the Fuller Acres Water Company also received about $2.5 million to renovate the water system, and they have not done anything other than purchase a storage container. And residents have asked them multiple times to provide them the bylaws, to provide them information on the water quality, to send out those notices in English and Spanish, and the board members are not doing that. This is becoming a huge issue. The water is not, the pressure of the water is not strong enough for them to actually run their coolers, and with this heat, it's becoming another issue. So, I would really appreciate if you can please return my emails and reach out to, and set up a meeting with the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please? Okay, seeing none, I will now consider item number five, Board Member Announcements or Reports. Are there any reports or referrals from the board? Supervisor Maggard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two things to mention this morning. The first is a referral to staff following an interesting move that the City of Los Angeles has made. I don't follow the City of Los Angeles very often, but they have agendized a, an ordinance in the City of Los Angeles that will call for it to no longer be tolerated, for people to camp, erect tents, make living accommodations, or sleep on public sidewalks and thoroughfares. And I think that's something we should consider here in Kern County. And I would like to ask the County Council, Margot Raison, our CAO Ryan Alsop, our Sheriff, Donna Youngblood, and our District Attorney Cynthia Zimmer, if they would get together, talk about that, and then come present to us, whether or not we have the ability to do that here. If they can do it there, I think we can do it here. And I would love for us to have a conversation about that. So, thank you to those I mentioned for having that conversation and getting back to us. The second thing is, I love to celebrate when people do extraordinary things. And many times, those things happen in the Third District. This happens to be the Third District. But I, I wanted to celebrate this morning Standard Middle School. And joining us this morning are Paul Myers, the, Mr. Myers, could you come forward as well as you, Ms. Denton? Paul Myers is the Superintendent of the Standard Middle School, the Standard School District, and Susan Denton is the Principal of Standard Middle School. For 22 years, the National Forum to Accelerate Middle Grades, has, Middle Grades Reform, has chosen outstanding schools to watch, schools to watch. And it's been going on for a long, long time. It's a very prestigious list to be on. And the only new school admitted during 2020 is, was Standard Middle School. So, I want to congratulate them on that. I want to congratulate particularly Superintendent Paul Meyer, Principal Susan Denton, the parents and the students. It's a great achievement, and just great things are going on there in your school district. I've been a fan for a long time, and I wanted to congratulate you. So, I have a little recognition certificate that's signed by all the members of the Board of Supervisors, and it just says to honor you for your academic success in being awarded as a state and national school to watch, for example, for public service and civic contributions to the community and to Kern County. So, congratulations. We are very proud of you. And Mr. Myers, if you'd like to say something about the award or Ms. Denton, please feel free to do that, and I'll come down and shake your hand.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate the recognition greatly. It's been many years in work. We set the vision many years ago that we wanted to go out and get this award. And although I set the mission, the vision, it's Principal Denton that actually was boots on the ground that made it happen. So, I'm going to let her take and talk a little bit about the reward.
Absolutely. Well, thank you so much for this honor, Mr. Maggard, and to the Board of Supervisors. We are so thrilled of the programs that we've been able to grow over the last few years. In the Standard School District and at Standard Middle School, we wholeheartedly believe in raising the whole child. Our district motto is "We Care." And Mr. Myers and the school board put forth a mission for us to make sure that we are not only working on academic achievements, but social, emotional supports for our students. And so, that's been a big push for us for the last few years. And so, we're very proud of the programs that we've grown, and we invite you to come and visit our campus anytime. Be happy to share with you all the things we have going on in Oildale. And we're honored to be recognized, not only in the state of California, but nationally. And we'll be recognized next summer in Washington, DC. So, we're very excited about that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Here you go.
Why don't you turn and let's take a photograph. Sabrina here. There's a great idiot bump up here. Yeah, get one.
Hey, are there any other announcements or reports from the board? Yeah, I would like to make up an announcement that last week, the Office of the County Council lost a superb and dedicated employee when Julie Prado unexpectedly passed away. Julie worked at the County Council's satellite office in the Juvenile Justice Center and greeted everyone who came to the office with an eager smile and warm hello. She was always cheerful, positive, and a pleasure to work with. She loved her family dearly. Her children and grandchildren were her whole world. On behalf of the entire staff of the County Council's office, and especially the tight-knit group who work at the Juvenile Justice Center, this board would like to extend its sincere condolences to Julie's husband, children, and grandchildren, as well as her entire family. Our thoughts and prayers are with the Prado family during this difficult time, and I ask that we adjourn today's meeting in memory of Julie Prado. Okay, our last item for consideration is item 13 under County Administrative Office, and that is the Preliminary Recommended Budget for Fiscal Year 2021 through 2022. And for that report, I will call on our CAO Ryan Alsop.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman. The members of the board are pleased to present for your consideration the Fiscal Year 2021-22 Preliminary Budget, which is a recommendation for the county of Kern and the special districts that your board governs. The County Budget Act, as you know, requires the approval of a budget before June 30 to establish spending authority until a final, final budget is adopted. The preliminary recommended budget before you, as you well know, is simply a temporary budget that will be used until budget hearings are completed and a final budget is adopted. Public budget discussions, budget hearings are currently scheduled for the evening of July 26 and the morning of Tuesday, July 27, with a final hearing. And budget adoption date currently scheduled for Tuesday, August 31. As is always the case, final fiscal year-end accounting of revenues will inform our final budget recommendation that will be provided to your board in August. I'd like to thank our department heads for their work and collaboration to this point. Thank you, as always, to our fantastic budget staff and the CAO's office, who are all here under the leadership of our CFO, Ms. Martinez, and my thanks also to Mr. Reservis for his assistance and leadership as our county's chief operations officer. More work is to be done on the budget, as we all know. We look forward to working with your board toward a final budget recommendation in August that moves this county forward. With that, I'll ask Ms. Martinez to come to the podium and to provide you with greater detail on this item.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. We are pleased to present you a balanced preliminary recommended budget for fiscal year 21-22. As Mr. Alsop indicated, today is the first of four public meetings to discuss the county budget. As the preliminary document before you is not intended to be modified as a temporary budget until hearings are held in August where a final budget will be adopted. At that time, our office will incorporate any direction received by your board and the public, and it will also be revised to account for the fiscal year 2021 year-end fund balance and the final assessor, the final numbers from the Assessor on Property Tax. This year, we will also revise the budget to incorporate any budgetary transaction your board approves related to the American Rescue Plan. I would like to give your board a very brief overview of our budget. As we indicated, our budget this year is $3 billion. It's approximately $47.5 million less than the previous year adopted budget. The main reason is the decrease is approximately $103 million of CARES funding, the Corona Aid Relief and Economic Act funding, that it's included on the 2021 adopted budget. That amount is offset by additional funding incorporated in the 21-22 budget from state and federal sources that are supporting our social service and health programs throughout the county. In addition, we are receiving additional community development program funding to address the impacts of the pandemic and provide additional funding for homelessness and housing. How do we fund our budget? The majority of our budget is funded what we call intergovernmental funding. Those are the state and federal funding that the county receives for mandated programs. In addition, we have approximately $599 million, or over half a billion dollars, of additional funding sources that come through the county in the form of grants or allocation, again, from the state and the federal government. Our taxes and a special assessment, those are revenue sources generated in our county and/or throughout the state, and include our property taxes, our sales taxes, our gas tax. So, that funds a lot of programs, not only the general fund, but outside the general fund, like our Public Works Department. So, as I indicated, our, our overall budget is $3 billion. We are incorporating in that budget the original estimate from the Assessor that included a 3.6 decline in our assessed valuation, primarily related to oil and gas. We, he anticipated an increase in residential and commercial. What we're seeing now, and we're anticipating that that decrease may be offset, the Assessor has indicated that our residential and commercial are trending a little bit higher. However, our oil and gas is still projected to decline between 25 and 30%. Our sales tax, as the economy recovers, we're also seeing our sales tax and consumer spending increasing, so we're also including an increase in our sales tax. And of course, our realignment funding that funds a lot of our social and health programs is also increasing because it's related to sales tax throughout the state. And again, our Prop 172 funding that is sales tax-related, we're also seeing an increase in that funding that is being allocated to our public safety department. Out of a $3 billion budget, our general fund is $151 million. The majority of our funding goes to public safety departments because it funds mandated programs, the jail, the district attorney, the public defender. The second-largest allocation, of course, is our public assistance. Those are mandated contributions that we have to our general assistance, to our Cal work, to our adoption programs, and of course, CPS. How do we fund that, the general fund? The preliminary recommended budget includes approximately $380 million or 4.30% less allocations to department. This reduction is offset by additional federal and state funding. Therefore, departments will not see an overall reduction in spending. The preliminary recommended budget also includes, is funded with $363 million in discretionary revenue. I want to clarify, discretionary revenue, even though it has the title discretionary, that is the local funding source that pays for the mandated programs throughout the county. It's not just available for your, unfortunately, for your board full discretion. The primary allocation goes to those programs that we have to fund because they're mandated, our jail, our district attorney. We have programs that are not mandated but are important to our community, libraries, parks. And so, that's the allocation we use to fund those programs. This year, we're including a slight decrease of $6.6 million from the prior year adopted. Again, we, although we're seeing an increase in sales, hotel taxes, and interest earning, the property tax original estimate includes a significant decline. We anticipate that once we receive the final assessment, roll will be modifying those estimates. In order to preserve services, this year, your board approved a guideline that required departments to submit their budget at status quo. What that means, we were not asking departments to take a budgetary reduction. In order to preserve those resources and the services, what we're doing instead, we're using $6.8 million in net fund balance and six... in net fund balance and $6.5 million in reserves to cover both pension cost increases for our safety department, some one-time funding for our sheriff, and some operational costs. We are confident that with the additional property tax and the careful use of reserves and fund balance, we will be able to mitigate that deficit. The following are a few of the changes that we're incorporating in the preliminary budget. For our safety departments, all fire stations will remain open, and all firefighter positions are funded to be filled. Your board already approved the additional positions for the sheriff department, in addition to the body worn cameras for operational position. Your board also heard a presentation for our probation department regarding the division of juvenile justice, now individual staying in the county a little bit longer. And the county will receive some funding for that. And we have worked with our district attorney to be able to fill more positions than in the prior year in order to help her with current vacancies that she has. Of course, homelessness is on our mind. And your board have approved the construction in previous year of the M Street Navigation Center. With that funding, they have been able to place 60 individuals, connect them to permanent housing. We have received grants to operate the navigation and also for the construction. And again, community development is receiving additional funding for rapid rate housing, emergency shelter, and other services. And with the CARES funding that we receive, we are continuing to stay a thoroughly funded rental and utility assistance through our partner, the Housing Authority. In this budget, we are restoring the reduction that our parks had this current fiscal year in order to preserve services. When we receive the final fund balance, we'll be back to your board to allocate funding for capital projects or maintenance of different parks. So we'll incorporate that in the final revised budget. And of course, our library was one of the most impacted departments with the reduction and the pandemic. So what we have done is restore approximately half a million dollars for them to be able to reopen our libraries throughout the county. Your board also heard a presentation regarding the American Rescue Plan funds, to be able to rehire staff that were let go during the pandemic, to be able to staff those open branches. Animal services, what we have done, we allocated $350,000 for spay and neuter. That's an additional $100,000 in this current fiscal year to assist them with their efforts across the county. We are helping them do the recruitment for a veterinarian. I think that is going to be vital to help them with the no-kill status. And through CARES funding, we were able to secure two vans to be able to assist with licensing and vaccinations throughout the county, so people don't have to come to the shelter. Again, this is only the first meeting. This is only a preliminary budget. We'll be back in front of your board on the 26 with final property assessment. We'll be back with final fund balances. And the public and your board will have an opportunity to provide additional input. We'll have the same presentation the following day during the morning board meeting. And again, we'll come back to your board on August 31 with the final adoption of the budget. The recommendation today is to approve the preliminary budget for next fiscal year as presented. And that concludes my prepared remarks, and I'll be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Are there any questions from the board? Supervisor Couch.
Thank you. I will make a motion that we approve the preliminary budget, but I want to ask if you... Let me retract that before I do that and ask you a question. Tell me where we are with the economic opportunity areas or the zones, whatever we call them. What did we do last year? Did we use all the money that was in there and just not fund them?
Supervisor Couch to the chair. What your board approved is to retain the balance that was already there, but not additional funding on this fiscal year to allow that property tax to pay essential services. What we anticipate doing coming to your board is with a revision once we know the final property tax.
So we didn't fund them last year?
This current year.
In this current year, we are not funding them?
Correct.
But you may be able to do that when you get the fund balance carried forward and the property tax numbers?
When we get those numbers, yes. We will reevaluate to see what the growth was and to restore funding if available.
What if those numbers come in exactly as we expect, and we wanted to fund them anyway? What would we have to do?
I'm trying to understand the question. Your board has...
Where would we take it from?
That will be taken for property tax that is used for other purposes. If your board wishes to fund them regardless of the growth...
I guess what I'm saying is, do we have to make departmental operational cuts to fund those economic opportunity areas, assuming we got exactly what you're expecting?
We would have to use carry forward, Supervisor Couch.
When do you know that number, the carry forward?
The Assessor anticipates finalizing the role probably by the end of next week. So we will have at least a good estimate at that point.
Right. I'll make the motion to adopt your preliminary budget. Thank you.
Are there any other comments from the board? Excuse me. No, not yet. Before opening a public comment on this item, I would like to announce that we have an interpreter, Mr. Fernando Lopez, available to provide Spanish to English translation for any Spanish speakers wishing to address the board. Thank you. So with that, we'll go ahead and open it up to public comment if we could have our first speaker.
May I ask what the limit is on speaking at this time?
I believe we still maintain two minutes.
Two minutes?
Limit. Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, that's what I found. I apologize.
Oh, no problem.
That's why, I'll be honest, I thank you for reminding me. It's on agenda because I can speak more. Sorry, I thank you. So it won't be much longer. I just wanted to clarify. Okay, thanks a lot. Here we go again. Good morning, Sharon Peters and the Board of Supervisors. My name is Francisco Martinez. I've been at Kern County working for 18 years. I'm a CPS social service worker. I live in District 2, and I'm a proud member of SEIU 521. I would like to refer to some quotes by the CAO in the article about the preliminary recommended budget from a June 27 article in the Bakersfield, California. Quote, "The preliminary recommended budget recognizes and addresses some of the county's most urgent priorities. At the same time, the preliminary recommended budget recognizes that in order to serve our community, we must balance priorities and needs with fiscal realities." In reference to the CAO quote, "The budget recognizes and addresses some of the county's most urgent needs." If the Board of Supervisors and the CAO chooses not to support a budget that recognizes county workers have not received a COLA in 13 years as one of the county's most urgent needs, then the only logical deduction is that the Board of Supervisors and CAO doesn't support a budget that recognizes county workers who provide services to the most vulnerable in the community as one of the county's most urgent needs. I'm here to say that I recognize services to foster youth as one of the county's most urgent needs. I recognize services to the unemployed as one of the county's most urgent needs. I recognize services to the mentally ill as one of the county's most urgent needs. I recognize services to victims of human trafficking as one of the county's most urgent needs. I recognize services to victims of domestic violence as one of the county's most urgent needs. Since 2009, when county workers last received a COLA, there are more homeless families than in 2009. Since 2009, there are more people on food stamps and Medicare. Since 2009, there are more people out of work. Since 2009, there are more children in foster care. Since 2009, there are more people suffering from mental illness. Since 2009, there are more women who are victims of domestic violence. Since 2009, there are more teenage pregnancies and STDs. Since 2009, there are more suicides. In conclusion, it has been said that a budget is actually a value statement. As currently proposed, this preliminary recommended budget reflects the values of the Board of Supervisors and CAO, but they do not reflect the values of county workers who provide services to the most vulnerable in our community. Because county workers have always recognized providing these services as one of the most urgent needs, especially for the last 13 years, while the county budget has balanced the budget on the backs of county workers. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Good morning. I'm Mary Mestes. I live in the Mexican Colony. Love David Couch, Supervisor Couch, Letitia.
Could you come a little closer to the microphone? Thank you very much.
Sorry about that. My name is Mary Mestes. I live in the Mexican Colony. And I have several things that I would like to talk about. Supervisor Couch, Letitia, Peters, I don't know, Zach, Mike, Marco, and Ryan. Okay, the things I would like to talk about is the homeless people in the Mexican Colony. Not only do they squat in other people's properties, but they leave debris all over the place. And lately, we have had to clean one lot from the front end of the lot all the way to the back alley. And I'm 73 years old, and Dora Hernandez is 71. We don't get any help from the younger people. We're the ones that are having to clean, okay? And I'm disabled, okay? Also, I would like to talk about paving in the colony. We would like the roads paved from Burbank and to the cemetery, from Magnolia, I mean, from Leonard, to the cemetery. Also, I would like to talk about the railroad tracks even from Shafter to Bakersfield. There is all kinds of large weeds from one side of the road all the way from Mexican Colony, from Los Angeles, all the way down, okay? Also, the other thing I would like to talk about is the sump in the Mexican Colony. It's got a lot of debris, and we are the ones that have to clean it. That is county, not ours. So they need to come out there and clean that. Also, Big John Road has a lot of debris that they have to clean up, too. We just cleaned it up, okay? Also, the other thing I'd like to talk about is the river. I was at the river on Sunday. There's a lot of garbage out there. Nobody's cleaning it, and also litter, okay? The other thing I would like to talk about is animal control. We have dogs, big German Shepherds that hurtle offenses and go after not only me. I've been bit five times in the colony by big dogs. So like I said, I'm 73 years old. I don't need to be running from big dogs, okay? So you need to get the people out there to get a hold of the big dogs, okay? A lady just the other day was attacked, not by a German Shepherd, but a big dog like this. And she is still devastated to this day, okay? So animal control in the Mexican Colony, not only the dogs, but more of the bigger dogs, okay? And that's all I want to talk about, okay? Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to respond to Mary. A lot of, I don't know if all, but a few of the things you just brought up have already been referred to our public work staff. So I just wanted you to know that.
I know, but the dog is innocent.
I understand that.
But if a dog hurdling the fence and go after people, that is illegal. So we don't get... As a matter of fact, your closest dog shelter...
I'm sorry, we need you to come back...
Could you come back to the podium, please?
Mary, I understand all that. I just wanted you to know that a few of the things that you brought up have been referred. I'd like specifically the sump and some of the other cleanup items. The others, maybe not. But I just wanted you to know those were already in progress. That was all. Thank you.
Thank you.
But can we get help from the animal control? Because I've been bit five times.
Understood.
Like I said.
My comment about some of these things already being referred doesn't mean we're not going to work on the others. I just wanted you to know that some of them are already in the process.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Gustavo Guirreg with Center on Race, Poverty, and Environment. As you heard, there are countless needs in the communities. But what I want to talk is about a list of priorities identified by the community groups that we work with. And thank you, Supervisor Couch and Mr. Alsop. We asked for a meeting with you. You gave us the time. That's very important, and we really appreciate your time, Mr. Alsop, for following up on our request. We appreciate that. And thank you for all the projects that are in motion that we asked in prior years that we know some of those are already completed. Some of those are in motion, like the flooding issue in La Monde that I think is moving forward in a great way. But there are some residents that are going to talk more about that. But what I want to do is just on top of that, just to share the list of priority by those communities that we are working with. We shared this with Supervisor Couch and Mr. Alsop, but we want to ensure that each supervisor have a copy of this. And we appreciate when you are continuing reviewing your budget to include the priorities of these communities. And again, I think just the lady that spoke before me just showed that this list is not the total list of needs in the communities, but these are some of the priority list that the groups that we're working with that want to see moving forward. Thank you for your support, and we hope that during this process you allocate funds for these projects.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Good morning. My name is Stella Escoto. I am from the Committee for a Better Arvin. Before anything, I would like to thank you for the effort you have made on behalf of our communities. I would just like to remind you that we have a dire situation in our communities with the roads that are in bad condition. One of those streets is on the corner of Sycamore and Edison. There have already been many accidents there. I would just like to see if you can focus on that street because it's one of the most traveled streets in our community. Muchas gracias. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Dora Hernandez. I live in La Colonia, which is in the unincorporated area of Kern in District 4. I really want to give thanks to our supervisor and the county for helping us improve our infrastructure and in allocating funds for providing recreational amenities in La Colonia and in supporting our efforts to keep Kern clean. During the month of June, we have been implementing a community-wide cleanup campaign. And the county has been generous, through American Refuse, in providing bins on every street and a slider for our residents to dispose of trash, debris, whatever they have, and then bulky items. To that effect, we have been imposing on our residents to keep the gutters clean. We don't have a street sweeper in the past decade. I think we had our streets swept like three times. We are in dire need of your funding, that kind of service. I mean, we can only do so much, but we applaud the efforts of the county to keep Kern clean. But we need you, like Mary Mestes said, there are a lot of things that need to be focused on, a lot of money that's needed to fund those programs out there. And the street sweeper is one of them, not only to mitigate the dust in the community, but also for our health. community, but also for our health and cleanliness. Sal Moretti has asked me several times, where can we plant trees in the Mexican Colony? Because do they be 617 funding? They can provide through some organization. I told him, Sal, we need vegetative barriers. We are surrounded by almond trees, and we have no way of preventing the thick dust or spray drift from coming into our communities. We have no way of knowing what they're spraying, when they're spraying. We just have to deal with that. So I am urging our county supervisor to find funding for a vegetative barrier along Big John Road and along Mantle Avenue. That would, at least it wouldn't reduce the dust, but at least that would mitigate some of it and help us with our health issues. Another thing is...
Ma'am, could we bring your comments to a close? We're about a minute over the time limit right now.
Oh, really?
Thank you.
Okay, yeah. This is, I just want to encourage the county to expedite funding for the recreational amenities that are spearheaded in the colony, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have our next speaker, please.
Hello. My name is Timoteo Prado. I'm a member of Comité Progreso de la Mont. First, I want to thank the board for their diligence in providing infrastructure for the preventing the flooding in La Monde. This is well-needed. It's well been needed for a long time. But I also wanted to take time to remember you that we also need infrastructure development in some of our roads and sidewalks. We met with Couch last month. We gave him a list of some of the roads that we would like to see repaid and also some of the sidewalks that we would like to be built in our community, and he gladly said that he will look into it. And I just wanted to remind you that both, we know that funds are not available as much, but as we want you to prioritize some of the needs that we need in order to continue making our community better and safer for all of us.
Thank you. We have our next speaker, please.
Good morning, every supervisor and the chair. Ya me enredé. Good morning, all the supervisors. I want to talk about the La Colonia project, Mr. Couch. I just have a question. Do you know how a date to start the project in La Colonia?
I'll throw that to Mr., I don't have the exact date in my head. I know that it's... Is Mr. Hill here?
Senor, su nombre?
Refugio Valencia. And I am a community organizer for Center on Race, Poverty, and Environment.
Thank you.
The question, Mr. Couch, is because we have more than three years with the project, and we don't see any work to La Colonia.
Well, you want to know why it took a little while? Is there, do you need an interpreter? Am I speaking too fast? Probably.
My quest, my question for Supervisor Couch is, do you have a beginning date for the project in the Colonia?
I don't have an exact beginning date, but I actually, I see, I see Mr. Hill behind you. Before you leave, he could, he could give you the best idea, at least a range of when that project would start. Mr. Hill, could you wave your hand so before he leaves, they could, right behind you? That gentleman right there. Okay. And the reason it's taken a while is, first of all, we had to get the money. I want to thank the C A O and his staff for that. Second of all, we had to buy the property from a willing seller. We didn't want to use eminent domain. That took a little while. And now we are at the, at the point of actually being able to do the project because we now own the land. We've closed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Good morning, everyone. Again, my name is Emma de la Rosa, policy advocate with Leadership Council. First of all, I would like to raise the need for a participatory budgeting process. I do understand Mr. Alsop and Mr. Service do make themselves available, but really, we need our supervisors to respond to our messages so that you are well aware of what the needs of the communities are. Had we met, Supervisor Scrivener, you would know that the community of Fuller Acres is in dire need of streetlights. You were out there in 2019, taking a tour of the community. I know that you know how much they need the infrastructure. And, you know, I would have loved to say thank you, similar to everyone, thanking Supervisor Couch right now for the sewer flooding issue, but it seems like we don't have very much attention from you, and we need the attention. They need the streetlights. They don't have any sewer, and I know the American Rescue Plan money can fund sewer. They don't have, a lot of their homes are in bad condition. We have a housing element program that can support the housing rehabilitation. We're not funding any of that, and we need to, and we need to actually bring the housing element into compliance as well. And again, we need to support our communities. One thing that is worth mentioning is that all of the, all of the folks who spoke right now are from rural communities. And, you know, it's, it's, and it's time for us to, we don't want to hear that you don't know what communities need because folks are coming up here and sharing what those needs are. And again, I ask that this process be participatory and that at the hearing, there's interpretation available, as it was today. And you also make yourself available to meet with us and community members so you can hear firsthand what those needs are. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, please. Okay, seeing none, are there any questions or comments from the board? Supervisor Perez.
Thank you, Chairman. What's the process moving forward? Maybe this C A O or whoever's appropriate from that office can just let us know what opportunities the public has to be heard moving forward as we move to finalize the budget process.
Sure. So we're always available through the chair. Supervisor Perez, we're always available to members of the public. I know that, I think, at least, I mean, we're pretty responsive to Emma when she, when she emails and will continue to be. I know that Mr. Aguirre, he and his group, we meet with throughout the year. Typically, they give us a list of priorities, and I typically commit to getting as many of those priorities done for them as we can. I mean, some of the things are harder than others, but we've always really met, and it's been very productive. And I think that, at least since, since I've been here over the last few years, that list of priorities, there's, we fund those things and get those things done. Not all of them, but, but quite a, quite a few of them. So that's just a, that's demonstrative of our, our office's just general demeanor when it comes to stakeholder groups, interest groups, no matter what community they're from, we're always available. Obviously, each board member or each board meeting, we have public comment, and obviously, the last several meetings, we hear public comment about needs of different, of different people. In terms of the, sort of just, just the budget, this is a placeholder budget. We will work in the weeks ahead, you know, really understanding where we are with revenues at year-end. That takes a while to calculate. Obviously, the assessor informs some of that process to figure out where we are with our, our key revenue sources, and that really informs final budget development. The, what also informs final budget development is input we receive from your board over the period between now and August 31st. And we'll have several, at least three, there are three budget hearings between now and August 31st that we will have, one in the evening, one at a regular board meeting in the morning on a Tuesday, and again, a final one August 31st. So that's the public process. As we get year-end numbers, continue to work with our departments, continue to work with your board, continue to receive public input about priorities. And ultimately, what comes to you is a, hopefully, a very good recommended final budget for your board to consider in, at the end of summer, in August, August 31st.
Thank you, Ryan.
Are there any other questions or comments from the board?
Ryan, what do we say to our workers who continue to make a compelling argument about the COLA and, of course, highlighting that words are cheap, which I think is a good reminder, right? What, what do we say to them, Ryan?
Yeah, I, through the chair, Supervisor Perez, we're working on it. We are, you know, our job sometimes is not the easiest. We really have to deal in, in the nuts and bolts finances that we have, and we've got a lot of things that we've got to accomplish as a county. It's not just providing a COLA. I mean, we've got, we've got a lot of business, businesses to fund and make sure that they're stable and sustainable and effective, et cetera. So I know words are cheap. We're working on it. We're literally talking about it on a daily basis. All these people are shaking their heads. We are working on a plan, and one that does involve COLAs. And there have been the two, the two gentlemen that spoke from S E I U. I mean, your board set aside $27 million in ARPA money to give to employees. You already made that decision. How that will be, how that will be distributed will, you know, remains to be determined through our conversations. We'll have to meet with our bargaining teams and to let them know that what our, what our plans are, and we're getting ready to get that underway. Those, that item will come before your board for each individual bargaining unit in the coming weeks to months. And obviously, we've been waiting on developments of the federal government and instructions, which really only have been made most clear just in the last week or so. So we're working on some things, and I think I will tell our employees to, to, with what I just said, hang in there, please. We continue to provide compensation increases where we are able. Just in the last four years, we provided a little over 6,000, almost 7,000, 5% bumps in compensation. 7,000, 5% bumps in compensation just to S E I U employees just in the last four years. Now, that is not a COLA, but it is a bump in compensation. That has continued. That has not stopped. We've also taken the opportunity with employees, and I'll use S E I U as an example because they're here, to where we've gone in and have provided, we've, there's 1,300 members of S E I U in just the last four years have been provided between a 5% and 25% increase in compensation. 1,300 members. That is separate from the 6,000 or nearly 7,000, 5% bumps in compensation. So do we need to provide a COLA? I say yes. I think we need to be in a position as a county to, to do that more regularly. We are working on plans for that, and I think that part of that needs to come through some reform in our current compensation in order to get to that so that it can, so it's sustainable. I have to deal in a world where whatever decision we make has to be financially sustainable long-term, and that's really what you're, you're counting on me to do. So with all that said, we are, we're working on it. I think we're excited about the future, and we will be speaking with your board on a fairly regular basis going forward, certainly throughout this summer, talking about these issues. I look forward to having those conversations with you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? Supervisor Scrivener?
I'll second the motion to approve the budget.
Thank you. We have a motion.
As presented.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. All ayes.
Okay, with, with having no more items to consider, an open session. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to a closed session to consider County Administrative Office Items 34 through 36 and County Council Items 37 through 40.
So moved.
With that objection, we're adjourned.